This House will come back to order. The House will come back to order. Mr. Clerk, you want to ring the bell? All right, members of the House will please come back to order. Take your seats. We're about to take up some business. The clerk will read the caption to House Resolution 4 EX.
House Resolution 4 EX by Burns, 159th and others. A resolution concurring with Governor Brian P. Kemp's Executive Order Number 031420.01, declaring a public health state of emergency and for other purposes.
Chair recognizes the Majority Leader of the House to speak to the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. Colleagues, thank you for your patience today. We've been about some very important business that needed to be tended to, and I think we finally have that in front of us all, as I think most of all of you are aware of. But I'll speak to the resolution. This resolution concurs with the Governor's declaration of a state of public health emergency, and I'm asking for y'all's support for this resolution. This resolution no longer speaks to when we, as a House, will come back to review the state of emergency. This is out of a abundance of caution due to current uncertainties that we all know If for someone unforeseen reason the House is unable to return, the Governor will have the ability to keep in place the COVID-19 state of emergency. That's simply to the point what this resolution does. A shout-out to Whip Kelly, who worked very diligently on this resolution to come into agreement with the Senate, and I will also say Speaker's Counsel Keith Williams. A shout-out to two of those gentlemen. They've worked very diligently, very professionally. I also appreciate the work of the Speaker in maintaining a safe state while also preserving and upholding the duties and responsibilities of this House. That's what this resolution does, that what we've been working on very patiently today. Again, thank you for that work. Ms. Speaker, I will be glad to answer any questions, if there are any.
Chair recognizes the Majority Whip, Representative Kelly, to your right, for a question.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. With a lead yield.
Ah, yield.
Mr. Leader, isn't it true that what this resolution does is recognize the seriousness of the COVID-19 coronavirus that is existing in our state and authorizes the Governor's declaration so that we have all the necessary resources available to combat that? Isn't it true?
That's true. I certainly know, the gentleman knows of what he speaks. He's worked very diligently on this, diligently, and he's considered every aspect of what we need to do here.
And one follow-up, Mr. Leader. Isn't it true that also this resolution does not disrupt any of the balance of power as designated under co-section 38, 351, and still maintains the Governor's authority while also the strong influence that this House plays as well in that process?
Absolutely. We should all be proud of this resolution. It's doing just exactly what we need to do, and to work with the Governor and the Senate.
Thank you for your work, Mr. Leader.
Thank you.
Do you further yield?
Yes, sir. I'll yield one more.
Chair recognizes Representative Turner, to your left, for a question.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. With the gentleman, the yield.
Ah, yield.
Are you aware if the paperwork has already been filed for the special session for April 15th, maybe I missed it in your presentation?
Yes, it has. Those signatures have been filed in the clerk's office, and then, and the Secretary of State.
Will you further yield?
Ah, would yield.
Has the Senate done the same with the, with the Senate Secretary?
We both have, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
That is correct. Thank you for the question.
You have no further questions.
Ms. Speaker, thank you for your help and your leadership. To the members, thank you for your leadership in your communities, and I would ask that we approve this resolution, and that we go home and all be safe, and take care of our families and our friends. I yield the will.
Mr. Leader, I want to thank you for your leadership and your hard work on this, and to the Majority Caucus Whip, who's already been given a shout-out, but let me add my thanks to that, as well as to the Minority Leader of the House, Leader Trammell, and to the Dean of the House, Dean Smyrie, for what has truly been a bipartisan effort to deal with a, an unprecedented situation that we're, that has confronted us, and I want to thank all those individuals, as well as many, many others who have worked on this. Is there any objection to the previous question being ordered on House Resolution 4 EX? Chair hears none. Previous question is ordered. Is there any adoption to the resolution? Shall this resolution now pass? All those in favor of the adoption of House Resolution 4 EX will vote aye; those opposed will vote no, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machine. On the adoption of House Resolution 4 EX, the ayes are 142. The nays are one, and this House has adopted the resolution. That will now go to the Senate. Is that right, Mr. Clerk? So it's on its way to the Senate? While we're waiting, I wanted to make mention that in talking to the Governor's office an hour or so ago, we've learned that blood supplies are running very low across Georgia. So for members and staff here, and our friends in the media too, if they so desire, as we look toward the days ahead, it will take all of us to do what we can for one another. So if you are healthy and otherwise able, I would encourage you to donate blood. You can reach out to the American Red Cross through their website at redcrossblood.org The Senate is at ease, is that true, Mr. Clerk? Since this morning? All right, we're gonna be at ease. We're not gonna leave, though. All right, we're gonna be at ease. We're not gonna leave, though. As soon as they vote, I will be recognizing the Majority Leader for a motion. The Senate has just adopted the, uh, HR 4 EX by a vote of forty-seven to zero. Before I recognize the Majority Leader, let me say to all of you again that our prayers, from my family to yours, go with you when you leave today. Take care of your families. And, um, uh, our prayers are, our prayers are that, uh, God will get us through this, and we know he will, and we'll come out on the other side even better as a state. Monitor your emails. Monitor your email. We will be communicating with you as often as need be. The Chair recognizes the Majority Leader of the House for a motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move that this special session of the Georgia House of Representatives be adjourned. Sign and die.
The Majority Leader has moved that this House, that this session, this special session of the Georgia General Assembly be adjourned. Sign and die. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it in this House is adjourned. Sign and die.